Time I've got is 9:05 a.m. This is our monthly elected officials meeting officially calling a meeting to order. Do we have any changes to the agenda? I'm not going to announce county commissioners because this is really an EO meeting, elected officials. It's really not a BOCC meeting, so it's almost irrelevant. So we have three items on the agenda, the first being the Idaho economy or any expansion thereof that Sam Okinour, who's the economist with the Department of Labor. Sam, you were a math major undergrad, weren't you?
I was, yeah.
So we are thrilled to have Sam here. A little bit about your background, Sam, and take it away.
Yeah, I'll turn this on. So I'm a labor economist for the Idaho Department of Labor specifically for the Panhandle region, economics and mathematics, educational background from Eastern Washington University. And in addition to doing this, giving economic information and insights to the good people of Northern Idaho, I also manage most of the forecasting projects for our department, producing forecasts of population, demographics, employment, things of that nature. So what I'm going to do for you today, this is the first time I've been back here in about a year. So given that I only come in here about once a year, I like to cover all the bases, talk about everything that might be relevant from an economic perspective. So we're going to be talking about inflation, labor supply and demographics. And really those last two items are kind of the same topic. So hopefully we'll cover all the bases and you'll have a good holistic understanding of what's going on economically. And my goal is to give you a good mixture of some national economic news, state and local, so we'll do a nice blend of all three levels. So we'll start off with this inflation topic. You are probably aware that inflation is a problem right now. This is what it looks like to us if we're to put it up here graphically. This is what we call the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. Basically what this means is if you were to take a big representative bundle of products and compare prices, they're about eight and a half percent more expensive on average than a year ago same month. Now obviously there's a lot of variation in there. We do have some subsectors like cars, gasoline, many food items that are up 15, even 20% year over year. So this is just a broad average and we'll talk about what is creating this inflation, what's driving it momentarily. Really quickly, I want to make a note about inflation as to why it's such a severe problem. So when you have high unemployment, let's say unemployment's 15%, which is very high actually, you're affecting 15% of the labor force, which is itself a little over 60% of the adult population. So even in a very severe recession, unemployment is probably impacting nine or 10% of the adult population. Inflation, of course, affects everybody because we all have living expenses. The other thing to note about inflation is that it is very, very difficult for people on fixed incomes, retirees and people on disability. And the reason for that is very obvious. If you're working, you at least have the prospect of wage increases and future wage increases to help you mitigate price increases. For retirees, people on disability, there's really no, there's no countervailing force to help mitigate rising prices. So we want to be aware that inflation is a very important societal issue. It affects everybody and it in particular will affect vulnerable populations like seniors and people on disability. So let's talk about why we have inflation. I'll try to be really quiet with this paper. So why do we have inflation? Well, economists love to make things extremely convoluted from a mathematical perspective. We love to come up with really fancy monetary models and the reason for this is what we call physics envy. Okay, physics is a real science. Economics is not a real science, which means we have to compensate for that by making the math as complex as possible, right? And the reason it's not a real science is because humans are, you know, rational entities that have autonomy. So humans behave differently unlike an electron, which kind of always behaves predictably. So that's why it's not a real science. So we don't need any of that. It turns out that that's all for vanity and we don't need any of those models to explain why we have inflation. So we're going to use something that we call supply and demand, which is accessible to everybody because it turns out you really don't need a lot of math to understand inflation. So let's talk about supply and demand. What happened from a demand perspective in the U.S. economy? Well, quite simply, we had an expansion of between five and six trillion dollars in liquidity in the U.S. economy, more cash. That came from a variety of avenues. It came from stimulus payments and expanded unemployment benefits. It came through government spending. Of course, federal budgets are very large, infrastructure packages, things like that. And it came through what we call pent up demand, which basically means during the pandemic, people were saving. They were not taking vacations. They were deferring purchases of cars and RVs. So they were building up a savings cushion. So once the pandemic starts to taper off and people begin to spend again, there's a lot more spending power. So if we look at total liquid assets in the economy, total cash and savings accounts, credit cards, government budgets, corporate spending, it's up about $5 trillion from the pre-pandemic numbers. So from an economics point of view, that's what we call demand, money trying to be spent. So let's look at the supply side. The problem is we had this massive expansion in the money supply, what, you know, people kind of colloquially will call printing money. That happened at the same time that we have severe constraints on supply. So we have a constraint on raw materials and inputs. Okay, lumber and gas are kind of the ones we're most familiar with, but it's not just these items. It's also things like fertilizer, aluminum, steel, and a lot of really niche industrial inputs that most of us don't think about, things like palladium and chromium and manganese. We rarely think about these things, but they're critical to modern manufacturing. My favorite example of this, and this is a particular problem because of the way global manufacturing works, it relies on very narrow, fragile supply chains. My favorite example of this is to look at semiconductors. So many of you are probably familiar with the fact that there's a semiconductor shortage. That makes it difficult to produce a lot of different products because most things are computerized in 2022 to a certain extent, most consumer goods. Well, how is a semiconductor made? It's made by etching a little silicon wafer with an industrial laser. Fun. How is an industrial laser produced? It's produced with something that we call processed neon gas. 70% of the world's supply of processed neon gas comes out of the city of Odessa, Ukraine. Okay, now, if you ask someone, do you think Ukraine is crucial to global computer supply? They'd probably say no. Ukraine isn't a particularly wealthy or developed economy. It's not known for electronics, but it makes a very crucial raw material input. Now neon gas can be made anywhere. It's extracted from the atmosphere. You don't need some like specific raw material to make it. You could make it pretty much anywhere on earth, but the vast majority of it is made in Ukraine because that's just how global supply chains are constructed. Countries specialize in raw materials and you end up with a very narrow hierarchy of supply. So this is how we can end up in situations where conflict in Eastern Europe spirals into shortages of automobiles in the United States because the carmakers can't get computers and the computers can't be made because you can't get gas for the lasers. And you can come up with more and more examples of this, but this is just a, I think this is a really good example of why we have raw material issues. It illustrates how fragile supply chains are. We also have labor shortages. Now I'm going to talk about labor shortages in more detail. It's its own discrete topic, but let us just say that labor shortages make it harder to solve all your other problems because it means you don't have what we could call a surge capacity to solve problems. So I always like to think about World War II as an example. This is partially because as an 18 to 35-year-old American male, I think about World War II four or five times a week anyway, right? But it's also a great illustration of this. In World War II, how could we suddenly start pumping out ships and ammunition and planes and tanks and jeeps and so on and so forth? Well, we had this depression, right? So you have 20% unemployment, which means you have surge capacity. You have a lot of manpower that you can suddenly call on to solve your problems. When you have a labor shortage, you have no flexibility. So let's use the neon as an example. We could make neon gas here in North Idaho or anywhere around the United States. We have the technology and we have air. That's all we need. What we don't have is a large available workforce to bring a neon processing plant online. So labor shortages make it harder to solve all these other problems. We also have difficulties with transportation. American ports are highly backlog right now with the exception of ports in California. And the only reason those have been cleared is because there are no ships coming from China right now because the Chinese ports are all shut off. Presumably, once you get a wave of ships trying to come in from China, those will be backlog too because we don't have enough crane operators, truck drivers, longshoremen, all the critical labor that's needed to make a port function properly. So right now, there's massive turnaround time on moving goods around the country. And then finally, we have global disruptions. So this is not only referring to what's happening in Ukraine right now, but also look at China. Who would have guessed that Shanghai, one of the most important ports in the world, would suddenly go completely offline for two months? It's a very unique situation that we're in globally where major nodes in the trading system will just suddenly shut off due to COVID or Chinese politics or whatever the case may be. Yeah, you had a question?
Couple. When you talk about the $5 trillion increase in spending as compared to what in the past? In other words, how big an increase?
So it's a $5 trillion increase in liquidity in the U.S. financial system and that's compared to, we use February 2020 as the baseline because that's like the last pre-COVID month. So you're looking at something like a 20% increase, right?
And then why are the Chinese ports shut down?
That's a great question. Presumably it's because China has a zero COVID policy, right? They'll shut an entire city until there's zero cases. I don't presume to know if there's internal political reasons because I'm not privy to CCP internal communiques, thankfully, because I think I'd go insane. So, yeah. So just as an illustration, I put a couple key inputs up here. Look at, the blue line is shipping containers. You can see they're almost six times as expensive, shipping rates right now. Aluminum has almost tripled and of course, gas, crude oil is up about four times. So when, these are, these are some of the most important input costs in global production. So obviously when your fuel is four times as expensive, sheet aluminum three times, shipping six times, it is no wonder that the price of cars is up, you know, almost a quarter right now essentially. So we can look at this a little, a little more, we look at what we call the PPI, which is the producer price index. So that's this red line, okay? The blue line is consumer prices. So the easiest way to think about this, cars go in the blue line, rubber, computers and aluminum go in the red line, right? So that's the raw material inflation index. Look at the inflation we have on the raw material side. It's up almost 20% year over year. So it's no wonder with pressure like this from the supply side that we have major inflation for consumers. So keep in mind, we have these massive increases in raw material expenses at the same time that we have a huge expansion in consumer spending. So this is consumer spending in the United States. I like to put this in here partially because I don't think people realize quite how much money is spent in this country. This is retail sales. So this doesn't even include mortgages, student loan payments, other nondiscretionary bills that you may have. This is just retail expenditure. And you can see it went from about $500 billion per month to over $600 billion per month. And that is associated with stimulus checks, savings being built up, expanded unemployment benefits, and of course, very low interest rates may, have made this possible. So this is Americans trying to buy things at the same time that there's huge physical constraint on the ability to actually get products to them. So this is why we have inflation. It's really not that complicated from an economic perspective. You have a massive expansion in household liquid assets at the same time that you have physical limitations on the economy's ability to produce things. And so this is kind of a new reality for Americans because we're used to living in a world where if you can afford something, you can acquire it, right? Expense is really the only limitation. We're not used to things being unavailable. If you can afford the car, you can go down to the dealership and for the most part, it'll be there and not only the model, but probably the exact color and trim package that you want, right? That's how America has worked for a long time. Suddenly that's not the case. Car inventories are rock bottom, housing inventories rock bottom, and Amazon can't even guarantee two-day shipping. So bedrock American institution, two-day prime shipping now in question. So I'll briefly also talk about homes because these are following the same logic. Why are homes so expensive? Because there are not enough homes. Now partially this is due to the baby boomers and I'll talk about that in a little more detail later. We always have to talk about the boomers, but partially this is just because home construction has been in decline over a long period of time. This is just new homes built in the United States adjusted for the population level. And you can see that it cycles because of course, construction is very cyclical, but it's cycling downward over time. And then you can see the housing crash in 2007 really scared the country off of building lots of new housing. So we end up with very minimal inventory and very high prices. Supply and demand, once again, we really don't need any kind of sophisticated economic theory to understand this. Supply and demand tells us most of what we need to know. So at this point, I will shift and we will talk about labor, which is the other major topic. So this is Idaho's labor market. That red line is March of 2020. So that is pandemic month. One out of 11 residents or working residents of Idaho is laid off in one month. So that's very unusual. Normally job losses are going to be strung out over 12 to 18 months, right? So this is not supposed to be there. That's very strange. But Idaho having this distinctive can-do attitude, we begin to get our jobs back very quickly. We become the first state to get back all the jobs that were lost to the pandemic and we're the number one state in the country for post-COVID job creation. Now, in recent months, the rate of job creation has slowed down. This is not because the economy can no longer produce new jobs. This is because there are no longer workers available to fill these jobs. And from our perspective, when we talk about job creation, a job isn't created until it's filled, right? We see something similar in Cootenay County, big drop, massive bounce off the bottom. Most of these jobs are back by the end of 2020 and then we just resume this growth path. And what I really like about this is you can see that COVID doesn't really alter the trajectory at all. It just kind of looks like a straight line running across the gap there. So this is nice because it indicates that COVID really did no lasting damage whatsoever to Cootenay County's labor market. We return to our growth path and not to minimize, you know, any of the suffering that happened in 2020, but on a macro scale, it looks really healthy, like a very full recovery. But we have labor shortages. So I don't usually encourage people to try to memorize numbers from these presentations, mostly because they change every month. You don't really care what the May unemployment number is, right? If you're going to try to remember one number, it would be this one. In Idaho right now, depending on the region you're in, there are between three and five times as many job openings as there are unemployed people, which means even if everybody unemployed got hired today, at least two out of three jobs simply cannot be filled. There are not sufficient human beings to fill them. So this is obviously what we call a labor shortage and the question becomes, why do we have this labor shortage? Well, unfortunately, there's a lot of different reasons, which means there's not one clear solution. So I'll run through a few of these and then we'll talk about some of them in more detail. So skill level mismatch is pretty self-explanatory. We do have a situation where unfortunately, it's just the reality that when unemployment gets down to two or three percent, a lot of the unemployed are people that have personal barriers to employment. It might be mental health issues, behavioral issues, substance abuse problems, things like that, or just really not having employable skills. So once unemployment is down at two or three percent, those unemployed people tend to be chronically unemployed is kind of the way that we put that. But additionally, we just have very low population growth and I'm going to talk about this in quite some detail. So we'll just put that there as a placeholder. We also have had a lot of retirements. Obviously that strains the labor market and it's particularly difficult because baby boomers are much more likely to be in supervisory managerial executive type positions. So when they retire, they leave a big, let's call it an institutional void, right? Because they have a lot of experience, a lot of institutional knowledge. We have disabilities of despair. That's the number four item on here. This is a bulk category that we use to refer to drug addiction, alcohol abuse, and then depression and suicidality. So these three things collectively are one of the largest causes of death for men in America. These issues predominantly affect men. And it's not just that this is a human crisis, you know, from a moral perspective. It's also an economic problem because it keeps hundreds of thousands of people from living productive lives, right? Which is what we want for everybody. We want everybody to be able to be productive and have a productive life. And unfortunately, substance abuse prevents that for a, an astonishing number of people. I will briefly say that the population afflicted by this tends to be unmarried males between 20 and 50 years of age. That's the demographic in there. Now, the unmarried point is key and I tell people, if you want to do one thing to improve your health as a man, you should get married because just statistically, married men are less likely to commit a crime, they're more likely to have a job, they're less likely to have substance abuse issues, and they're even less likely to die. The life expectancy for a married man is about five years longer than for an unmarried man. For women, there's not a statistical difference, but my wife tells me life can feel longer. So, so, but from an economic perspective, we're losing hundreds of thousands of people out of that demographic due to these substance abuse issues. Childcare availability is another issue, as we all know. I have a seven-month-old at home, so first off, if you see drool on my suit, it's probably not mine. But secondly, we all know that childcare availability keeps people out of the labor force. Either they can't find childcare or it's so expensive that it, it doesn't break even on the second job, right? And childcare is notoriously difficult to solve, not just because there's a regulatory ratio of square footage and workers to the number of children that you can have at a facility, but also it's very difficult to solve from a labor perspective because people that are attracted to working with children tend to want to work in schools. The pay is better, the schedule is better. I mean, you get summers and spring breaks and things like that. And also compared to like a daycare setting, the children are maybe a little more rational and easier to deal with and maybe not middle school, right? But for the most part, people that want to work with kids want to work in schools. They're not likely to want to have a long career in a daycare facility. So daycare facilities in fact frequently employ people who are working on their teaching certificates and then they go get a teaching job once they're done. So it's very difficult to solve the childcare issue from that labor perspective. And then finally, we have choosy job seekers and this simply reflects the fact that during COVID, people got used to work from home and hybrid work and flexible working hours. And now a lot of people aggressively pursue that, which makes it difficult for some employers to hire when they can't meet those expectations. Okay, so let's talk about population. Let's, let's talk about demographics and how this relates to employment. Population growth is very anemic in the United States. This is the growth of the 25 to 55-year-old population. That's the key working demographic because it excludes college students, most college students under the age of 25, and it catches people before they might transition to early retirements. So this is the key working demographic. You can see the aggressive growth rate in the seventies and eighties. That's as the baby boomers are becoming adults and getting into the labor force. It's really easy for your economy to grow robustly when you have this influx of young people. This is also good from the demand side because in the seventies and eighties, the baby boomers were buying houses, they were buying appliances and cars and all the things you need to set up an adult life. So there's not only a steady inflow of workers, but there's a steady inflow of new households being set up, fueling demand for consumer goods and houses. But look at it crater off. It actually goes negative there for a couple of years. Right now, we're looking at literally 0.1%. This most recent census release for the 2021 population numbers was a groundbreaking census because for the first time ever, America had zero population growth in a year. It was less than 0.1%. Technically, it was positive. It's like 0.051%, right? So it's essentially zero. Now, this is due to demographic choices and culture shifts that have occurred in the United States. So let's talk about how this happened. First, let's look at Cootenay County. This is population growth in Cootenay County and I chopped it up into three blocks. Under 15, they're on the far end, 15 to 65 in the middle, and then retirees, 65 and older over here. Now, the way to read this is the blue bars are the last 10 years, the red bars are our projection for the coming 10 years. And you can see there's a very clear pattern going on here where the bulk of our growth is in the 65 and older population. Now, I want to briefly state that I believe our forecasts might be a little bit conservative on how badly it will be skewed towards the older age range for the following reason. Interest rates are rising and what that does is it cuts first-time home buyers out of the housing market. It makes housing more unaffordable for people who have to finance. So what's the implication of that? The housing market will be skewed more towards baby boomers and retirees because they're paying cash. They're going to be less affected by rising interest rates. So the, the sort of calculus in the housing market is going to be skewed more and more towards retirees due to higher interest rates. So it's entirely possible that this is going to be skewed even more towards the, the right most bars due to rising interest rates. So how did we get in this situation? Well, this is due to falling birth rates. Right here, we have the population of school-aged children and I chopped it up by single years. Okay, so what do we notice about this? There are more high schoolers than there are middle schoolers and more middle schoolers than there are elementary kids. And once you get down into the elementary ages, you know, there's about 100,000 fewer children with each passing year. So birth rates are in a pattern of long-term decline and tapering. And this is important because these are the workers 20 years from now. I like to think of it as a conveyor belt where each bar is a age, a single-year age group and you have a bar that goes over into retirement and at the far end of the conveyor belt, you have a, a thing of young kids coming in and that's how you try to balance your workforce. And this conveyor belt is not balanced, right? Much larger age groups going out than coming in is kind of how I like to think about it. So this is something that did not begin with the millennials, but as you can see, hopes that millennials will really start, and not to be crass, cranking out kids, right? Because that's what we need from an economic perspective, that's not materializing. I'm trying, I've got a seven-month-old at home, but I am totally sympathetic to people who don't really want to have am totally sympathetic to people who don't really wanna have three or four of these things cause they're not very rational. I don't know if you know that. I'm kind of pride myself on being a fairly rational person, so it's a, it's an interesting experience for me for sure. This, so this is the millennials' children, right? These, these are the children being had by millennials right now, but this began long before the millennials. So the average baby boomer grew up in a home with three siblings. There were four kids on average per baby boomer household when they were kids. They went on to themselves have on average two children. So the average number of children per family was slashed in half across the working lives of the baby boomers. So you might be thinking, well, I've heard that there are a lot of millennials, that they're this huge generation. So how is the workforce not growing? Well, that's why. You have a lot of millennials because you had a lot of boomers. But when there's only two millennials per baby boomer household, that's not growth. That's replacement. Okay? So you have a lot of millennials on aggregate, but they essentially constitute a replacement, numerically speaking, for the baby boomers. So you end up with a stagnant workforce. And this is very unfortunate, and there doesn't seem to be any sign that this is reversing itself. It just continues to taper year after year. One of the most alarming statistics that I've seen recently is in the latest census release. Northern Idaho was the fastest-growing region in Idaho. Idaho was the fastest-growing region or state in the country. And yet, all five panhandle counties had more deaths than births. So the natural rate of population growth is negative. All of that growth is due to the internal immigration that's happening around the United States. People moving, right? So our growth is entirely dependent on in-migration. The natural rate of growth is solidly negative in all five counties in the panhandle. So you end up with this. This is the percentage of adults that are working. It shrinks from about seventy percent at the beginning of the two thousands all the way to about sixty-two percent. So this is not only because a larger percentage of your adults are over sixty-five and they're retired, but this is also due to those other things kind of eating away at this. Alcohol addiction, drug abuse, childcare shortages, lack of education. Right? So the way that I like to think about this is the demographics present us with a very difficult labor situation. And then all of these other issues prevent us from maximizing what we have left. Right? That's, that's kind of the framework that I have, is the demographics make it difficult. And then all of these other societal issues eat away at what's left. So we end up with a shrinking labor force as a percentage of the adult population, and that just makes it very, very difficult for employers. I'll also, I'll briefly point out, that's absolutely not unique to Idaho. That line is gonna look very similar no matter which state I put up there. Okay? So obviously, we have retire retirements accelerating. This is just the total number of retirees in the United States. Uh, and you can see that it, it got ahead of expectation during COVID. So that dotted line is our projection, and that's just based on how many people are turning sixty-five. And you can see, we apparently had a decent number, more than two million early retirements due to COVID. And you can really see why that would be the case. There's so much uncertainty, fear, uh, work from home, you know, public health protocols. And yet, my 401K is healthy, as long as I didn't sell in February. Um, hopefully you didn't. So as long as you didn't panic sell in February, your 401K is great. Your house is worth a lot. Uh, I don't wanna deal with this, so I'm just gonna retire two years earlier or whatever, and you end up with a a rush, sort of a wave of extra retirements during COVID, which puts this added stress on the labor market. And as I said, the people retiring have a lot of institutional knowledge, so you're losing managers and supervisors and senior positions, which strains their organizations, their company, and creates all sorts of voids. Yeah.
Will inflation have a negative impact on this in terms of driving people back into the workforce in some either part or full-time capacity?
It's possible because we know that retirees are more sensitive to inflation. Cause they're, you know, in principle, they're on fixed income. But in practice, you don't see this in large enough numbers to make much of an impact on the overall labor market, and they're going to be short timers anyway. Right? So inflation is not gonna fix the labor market in terms of driving people back to work. The, the percentage of Americans that un, what would be the word, un or de-retire is very low. Um, it, it's, it's quite low. So, um, I wouldn't count on that being any kind of solution. And any bump you get from that is gonna be very short-lived. Yeah. Uh, and then lastly, and then we'll open it up for Q and A. Uh, I wanna talk about the baby boomers conceptually. Um, because I don't think people understand what a unique social experiment the baby boomers are. Now, I wasn't there for the sixties. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is the fact that the baby boomers are unprecedented in terms of a generation of retirees that is not only so large. We're closing in on fifty million retirees in this country. In the mid-nineties, it was about fifteen million. Not a lot of people realize what a huge expansion it is. So it's not just how many of them there are. It's also that compared to prior generations, baby boomers are quite wealthy. And they're quite healthy. Okay? So look at median household income. And I actually adjusted this for inflation. So this is in current numbers. In nineteen seventy-five, in current prices, median household income was only fourteen thousand dollars in the United States. Within twenty years of the baby boomers hitting the labor market, it's risen to fifty-six thousand dollars. So they were just making an astonishing amount of money compared to prior generations. They were also the first generation where a majority of households had two incomes for an extended period of time. We all know that equity markets performed very well over the lifetime of the baby boomers, and they had a couple nice crashes to buy the dip on. So financially, the baby boomers are the healthiest generation of retirees ever. They're also quite a bit healthier, not only just because medicine is better, but also because they were more like, less likely to do manual labor. Right? So that they reached their retirement in better physical shape, better financial shape, and there's about four times as many of them as there were previous generations of retirees. So what does that do to the country? Well, in the past, let's say the World War II generation, when they retired, their spending dropped off dramatically. So you lose a worker, but you also, for the most part, lose a consumer. There was very minimal spending from retiree populations prior to the baby boomers. With the boomers, that's not true. Their spending remains quite robust. So you lose a worker, but the consumer remains, and you basically end up with a a, a growing disparity in the ratio between workers and people trying to buy cars and homes and other consumer products. It's very unique. The baby boomers are the largest generation in terms of home buyers right now. That's absolutely unprecedented that the main demographic buying houses is retirees. So when you look at what's going on in the housing market, the reason prices are so insane right now is not just that we weren't building lots of houses, building up stock. It's also, we didn't really expect the baby boomers to retire and then start buying homes. That's very, very unique that your retiree demographic is one of your main drivers from a demand perspective. And so this is a big reason why we have inflation, why we have labor shortages, why we have a shortage of housing, and pretty much anything you can think of. Is that we have this enormous population of baby boomers that's still buying homes. Nobody expected them to be the main driver of the housing market after retirement. That was not the case for previous generations. And of course, we're speaking in terms of averages. There's a bell curve of income, and not all baby boomers clearly are, are wealthy and affluent and buying homes, but a significant number of them are. And it's driving a lot of what we're seeing in housing and and in migration here. So let's wrap all this up, and then we've left a little bit of time for Q and A at the end. So inflation. Inflation is likely to moderate a little bit, meaning it it might stabilize, come down a little, but it's going to remain elevated for, we're probably looking at a term of three to five years of elevated price growth. Because we're looking at really serious damage to supply chains. So let's use that neon gas example again. I am not a military prognosticator, but let's just say, we don't know if the West will actually get access to the, the neon gas from Odessa again. Who knows how that's gonna pan out? You've got internal politics in China blocking off those supply chains. There's a lot of uncertainty around access to raw materials right now. That can't be resolved with monetary policy, with raising or lowering interest rates. It's really kind of beyond the traction of our conventional economic policy tools. Right? Cause we're dealing with things in the physical world. And America has a limited ability to solve these problems because of the labor issue. America on paper is the best country in the world for a lot of reasons, but also because, I'm a patriotic person, so when I talk about the economy being bad, don't, don't mistake that, okay? So America's the best for a lot of reasons, but also because we're the only major country in the world that has the capacity to be food secure, energy secure, and technology secure. China relies on food and energy imports. They're not secure. Russia has the raw materials, but they are not technologically secure. They rely on imported technology. America has pretty much what we need. But you need labor to exploit that, right? You need labor to exploit gas, to, to exploit our agricultural wealth, to make neon gas, right? So our labor supply means that we have a limited ability to solve these problems quickly. Okay? You can't just clear a port overnight when there's not enough crane operators, right? So there's not likely to be an immediate solution or a resolution to inflation for that reason. Secondly, labor shortages are probably going to be chronic for the simple reason that we are up against a demographic reality. Now, we can nudge this by resolving childcare issues. Helping people get sober and live productive lives, right? These things certainly matter, but they matter at the margins. The main thing driving the labor shortage is demographics, and demographics are notoriously difficult to steer from a government perspective. Um, I always like to look at the example of the Nordic countries. Because if you look at countries like Sweden and Norway, they have robust government assistance designed to promote family formation. And yet, their birth rates are lower than ours. Interestingly, in the United States, higher income is associated with fewer children. Right? So it's not immediately clear to me that there's some sort of financial or monetary solution to a demographic issue. Right? This is deeply baked into culture and people's preferences and and the kind of lifestyle that they wanna live. So it's really beyond our capacity to steer. So kind of the concluding thought is that we need to realize that we're living in a world that is defined by physical limitations. The physical ability to get raw materials, produce products, and move them to consumers, the physical capacity to build new homes, and the physical limits of our population. So this is not an economy that is dominated by a financial concern. The issue is not money. The issue is in the real world, which is not where economists generally like to reside. Uh, we like to do everything with financial and monetary policy tinkering, but unfortunately, this is where we're at, physical limitations. So, um, I realize that this is not a particularly cheery presentation. And for that, I apologize. Uh, but it is my resolution never to lie to you. So, uh, you can take that for what it's worth, I guess. So are there any questions about this rosy picture?
Sam, I have a question. My world is just. My world is just Coot, Cootney County.
Sure.
But you have a larger perspective being
Sure.
the Idaho State Department of Labor. But what we see is that employees are leaving one industry, sheriff's office, to other industries. Because other industries are becoming more paying better. But government doesn't seem to want to work at the pace necessary to retain those, those employees. Now, we have seen some successes in counties in Idaho that are a little more aggressive. Um, is that something here in Cootney County that I'm being, uh, or is this something that you can validate that it's likely happening other places?
Sure. So I'm not a human resources professional, and I can't tell you what to pay people, right? That's beyond my scope. But we have a very tight labor market, and textbook behavior in a tight labor market is poaching and, um, essentially bidding wars on wages. That's just what happens when you have such a tight situation. So it's not surprising at all. The last time we had a tight labor market like this was in the seventies. And in the seventies, if you weren't handing out a ten percent raise on an annual basis, you're probably losing people. And if you're not hiring people very, very quickly, they're going other places. So we hear from employers all the time. I had an interview set up with this person, and they were a no-show. And the suspicion is, you know, they just applied so they can get their unemployment. Right? So of course, it's our job to audit these things and and follow up. And most of the time, what they find is that that person already signed somewhere else. They already got a different job. Uh, and that's why they didn't show up to the interview was the interview wasn't soon enough, right?
What was your favorite TV show in the seventies?
I wasn't around for the seventies, unfortunately. It sounds cool. I love sixties music, though. Vietnam music was the best. Yeah. The boomers are rightfully arrogant about their cultural supremacy. I will say that. I'm a big Bob Dylan fan. Yeah.
When you talk about the boomers, um, driving the housing market, why is that? Seems like they'd be selling and buying.
They are. Um, so I was speaking locally. Boomers are driving the local housing market. Um, they're selling in the big coastal metros, and honestly, a lot of the demand in the coastal cities is foreign. Um, and part of the reason for that, it's kind of surprising. Uh, globally, owning property in the United States is considered an excellent way to store wealth. So let's just, let's talk about China, right? Uh, China is sort of known for its authoritarian political system. I think that's fair to say. Um, so they can get at your bank account, but they can't confiscate a home in San Francisco. Right? So it's very popular actually for, um, globally, for people to park wealth by buying property in the United States, and a lot of that is on the West Coast. So there's a huge influx of foreign money into real estate markets on the coast. And also just tech workers trying to get close to Facebook or Twitter or Uber headquarters or whatever the case may be. Right? Cause those are very high earners. Um, that will just take anything in reasonable proximity to the office.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Other questions?
That must mean I explained everything perfectly, so I'll take it.
Hold on, hold on a second.
Yeah.
Jonathan, anybody? Uh, Sam, I've got one.
Sure.
All right, I am a boomer. I've been through probably six recessions.
Sure.
Easily. And each one was caused by different circumstances. In seventies, we had gas shortages and whatnot. But what I find especially compelling about your presentation is the focus on demographics. Right now, we're short, I think the figure's eleven and a half million jobs in this country. And so Cootney County is a microcosm of that
Yeah.
problem. And if I look at the policies that are, or at least the direction that the country is going in with an aversion toward, let's say, K through twelve assistance in education and things of that nature, that would allow a greater participation on the part of parents, both parents being able to work. I don't know how we're gonna solve the demographic problem. Now, there are arguments against that because now you've got to have expanded childcare and things of that nature. But what I found particularly interesting is that Economic Development Corp had published a study that was done by a firm, which I thought was pretty compelling. And it was about a twenty-page, I'll make it available if I can locate it. And basically, what they concluded is, like it or not, folks, you don't expand immigration. You got a problem. So we could be headed toward a period of implosion simply because we can't produce the labor supply. Come in.
Yeah, so, um, I'm not, uh, so I gotta be careful when I comment about immigration because and I, in general, I always like to tell people economics cannot tell you what to do because we're simply elucidating financial trade-offs. But I can't tell you from an ethical or cultural or values perspective what is or is not important to you. So never look to an economist for like a big picture answer. But from an economic perspective, for a long time, Mexico was our demographic backstop. But from an economic perspective, for a long time, Mexico was our demographic backstop, because the immigration that came from Mexico was explicitly job-seeking. Most of the immigrants that came from Mexico were between 18 and 35. They came explicitly for work, and when you looked at immigration from Mexico, their labor force participation was off the charts. They explicitly came for work. Immigration from Mexico itself has tapered a lot, okay? So, we look at pictures of what's going on at the border. It's important to remember, almost all of those people, they're not Mexican. They're coming physically through Mexico, but they're from Central America, so it's a very different type of immigration. It's more motivated by fleeing, you know, crime and, you know, political violence in those countries. And I'm not here to comment one way or another on immigration policy. I'm just pointing out that the immigration we're getting now is different from what we were getting in the 90s. In the 90s, the immigration was Mexican citizens, and legal or illegal, they came in large numbers explicitly to work. Now, it's unclear if you get the labor participation that you were getting from the Mexicans. And in terms of numbers, illegal and illegal, it's below what it was in the 90s, just in terms of the boost that it gives you to the labor supply. So, the other thing to note about immigration is that immigration tends to be a very precise tool, because there are a lot of visa programs designed for specific jobs. There's an agricultural visa, there's a tech visa, there's a nurse visa, right? So, if you're fortunate enough to have a visa program tailored for what you need, then immigration can become more of a solution, but for a lot of sectors of the economy, there's no visa for them, right? So, it's not clear to what extent America's immigration policy is designed to solve labor issues. And then, of course, we just have to remember that the type of immigration coming over the southern border is very, very different from what we were getting 30 years ago, when it was young, specifically Mexican citizens who were coming to work. And, you know, like, you would look at... It's always hazy, but, you know, something like 90 to 95% of them were working after they came to America. So, that's obviously really good for the economy. And it's not clear the extent to which you're getting the same benefit from current immigration, just because the character is very different.
Thank you.
Yeah, because Mexico actually worked really hard to curb immigration to the US in terms of urbanizing, providing more jobs, because they don't want to end up in a situation where they don't have 18 to 35-year-olds. It's really hard to run a country when all your young men have gone north. So, Mexico worked really hard to curb that for their own demographic problems. Nigeria's supposed to be like the second biggest country in the world in 50 years. They're like on, they're on pace to hit like 700 million in 30 years. It's what birth rates do, right? The birth rate's a very important number. It really defines what happens to the country, and it seems to be really hard to steer or control from a, from the perspective of policymakers, so, yeah. Any other questions? Yeah?
Sam, one industry we are defining that's having a hard time recruiting the labor force.
There's a few that are particularly having a difficult time at the moment. Construction, for sure. There are no skilled tradesmen available at this point. They're basically trying to suck people right out of their apprenticeship program, straight into work, because there's just nobody with plumbing or electrical expertise is unemployed right now. Healthcare always struggles, and those are probably the two biggest ones. So, incidentally, you're also having problems in the service sector, because we've got problems with Gen Z. I'm not going to comment on everything that's going wrong with Gen Z. Frankly, their mental health indicators are shocking. If you look at the percentage of young women that report eating disorders or depression, it's really shocking. And so, they're not a healthy generation, but we also struggle because wages are so high right now in like a fast-food setting. Let's just use that as an example. Their expenses are so low, because they live with their parents. They really just want gas and, to be honest, slurpy money, right, for the summer? So, they work for three or four weeks at 18 bucks an hour at Taco Bell. They make some money. They quit to enjoy their summer, and they know that if they run out of cash, they can go to Arby's and work for three or four more weeks. So, we see young people actually treating the service sector like gig work. They work for a little spurt, stack up some money, quit, spend it, work again, and it's really difficult for the service sector to get a stable flow of workers from that, that kind of that 16 to 24 age group. It's not nearly as reliable for service sector work as we used to. It's just that we don't think of fast food as being as economically vital as a hospital or home construction, so we don't normally lump them in as those sectors that are really hurting. Plus, all of Gen Z, they want to be YouTube stars and social media influencers, because they don't have real heroes.
We've got a few minutes left. Anyone else?
I wanted to be Joe Camel when I was a kid. I just thought he was cool. I didn't understand what he was selling.
No other questions? Jonathan, anyone? Thank you so much, Sam.
Yeah, thank you for having me. It's always, always an honor.
So, Sam, we've got a copy of your presentation, do we?
Yes. Yep, he's got the PowerPoint, and it's all public domain data.
Super. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. You're certainly welcome to stay. Okay, let's move on. Second item: Employee Status Change Form Automated via OnBase. Kim, Carrie?
Good morning. So, we have a wonderful update on some, some process improvement that we've been working on since last fall through the status change form for employees. So, you may all be, excuse me, familiar with our current form. This is the same form that the county's been utilizing for over 10 years. It's a very manual process. It's a fillable form, but it's, you know, the person that's designated by your department has to physically go into each area and fill out what's necessary. Last year alone, we processed about 917 of these. So, it really follows the employee through their lifecycle with the county, with any change to position that they're in, any change in status, any change in benefits as far as the position is concerned, not necessarily the person and what they're signed up for, but just the position. And some changes in pay, like the Sheriff's Office has anniversary increases, and so every one of those employees is manually processed through HR and then, of course, payroll. So, last fall, we had actually been looking at some, some process improvement regarding some reports that we have available, and we took a look at the status change form as well. And the timing was fairly good, because OnBase was coming on board. So, when we met with Carrie in October, I think it was, she, we had our wish list of everything that we were hoping to accomplish, and she said, "OnBase can accomplish this for us." But we had to wait until it was HR's turn in line with OnBase for implementation. So, we've been working together for several months to try to get this process solidified, and we're ready to actually roll it out. And so, of course, we're bringing it to the electeds first. And what this does is it changes the process from a paper process to an electronic process. It's the same information that we get, but what it does is it improves accuracy from the department. So, currently, on average, we have between 20% of the status change forms and up to 40% of the status change forms that need some sort of addition to the form by either HR or payroll, or that needs a correction. And this is completely something that's understandable, given that there's a ton of information that's in each form. So, there's lots of opportunity to get some little thing a little bit off or missing that needs to be added. And so, what we've proposed and what OnBase is able to provide for us is the department... And when we say the department, this would be the person you've already designated as the trustworthy source for your department to process these forms. They would simply pick an employee, and it would auto-populate everything associated with that person's position and what they're currently in the system for, as far as wage, as far as benefit group, as far as their status, if they're non-exempt or exempt, if they have special duty pay associated with them. Everything that is current is auto-populated. So, this saves the department a ton of time and effort as far as gathering that information out of the system and transposing it correctly onto the form. And then it creates a routing process, very similar to what New World does for bill pay, you know? So, you know, currently, a department would put in an invoice, and it would go through a series of approvals, and then it would go to the auditor's office. Well, this will do the same process. The department inputs, it sends it to their approval level. That then gets sent to Human Resources to verify the position numbers associated, you know, the new information that they're updating it to. And then it gets sent on to payroll for their final portion as well. And then it'll be, you know, searchable through OnBase for future use. So, it is, in our eyes, a huge improvement process gain for the county, a huge time saver. It'll streamline the process considerably, take a lot of stress out of having to maintain these forms for departments going forward. So, one thing that we do need to let folks know about is our timeline, and then also just some transparency about what will be viewed by departments, so that you're aware before we actually do this rollout. So, for timeline, we're looking at Pay Period 13 as being a test run. And I've connected with the Personnel Administrator at the Sheriff's Office to discuss this already, but we'd like to do a super-user test run in Pay Period 13 for the Sheriff's Office to see if there's any, you know, little bugs we need to work out, if it works for them, if it's a good process from the user's side. We anticipate that it will be. Then, in Pay Period 15, it would be rolled out to everyone. And in the meantime, Carrie and IT is going to generate some training videos that will be available on Casey Place, and then also a Zoom meeting for an in-person, well, Zoom training to walk departments through this process that would actually be doing the processing of these forms. So, we think we've got a good timeline. The portion that I want to make everyone aware of is that the difference between filling out this old form and going into New World and seeing just your department is that in the OnBase system, in order to facilitate some employee changes, like department transfers, you have to have access to all employees. And what that means is only access to what that employee's public information is currently, so that it can autofill where they're going. So, your already identified trusted employee in your department, when they go to fill out the new form, they will be choosing a name or an employee number. That autofills their current information. So, if it was a department transfer, if someone was transferring from, you know, Human Resources out to the Solid Waste Department, when they chose that Human Resource employee, it would autofill everything, including their wage. So, that's a little bit of a change. It's, we've, of course, run this process through our legal team, and it's all public information, so there's no concern with, with that aspect, but we do want to let you know that is a tiny little change to the system. So, Carrie would like to do just a tiny demo to show you the capacity.
Great, Carrie.
Okay. So, when you come into OnBase, so you have to have a login to OnBase to get to this form. You will click on the form icon here at the top, and then your status change form will display here. Thank you. When I click on the form, I can expand the screen, so you can see a little better. This is where all the details come up, where you will pick your information. The first thing you need to pick is your category, because your category will drive the fields that show up on the screen for you, so that you're not getting extra fields, and you won't need to try to determine what you need to fill out. The form kind of is interactive and helps you fill your form out. So, notice I have exit as my default, so I have my exit type that comes up here, and my end date is showing here. And if I change to, say, a career progression, that exit information goes away, and now I have a begin date on this site, and I have different fields that show up down here at the bottom. So, I just wanted to show you a couple of different codes. So, career progression shows the different fields that come up on this bottom section. You're only going to enter information here if it's changing. So, if it's not changing, you won't enter the information. If I pick Department Transfer, like we talked about, then the department field will show here. So, you would pick your department to show that you're changing departments. The other cool thing is the calendar information. So, when I enter the year and hit Tab or go off that field, all your pay periods show up. So, you can see the pay period dates. You can pick which, which pay period you want, by what date you want this change to start. So, you can scroll down and say, "I'm going to pick Pay Period 18," and it shows you your starting dates, your ending dates, your check information. When I select that, the dates also populate here, so you can see what the start and end dates of that pay period are, and you can see it populates the start date of the pay period in the begin, but you can change that. So, say this person's going to start mid-pay period, you can change this date to the date you want it to be. But it needs to be within this pay period range, so there are some checks and balances as well. If I were to change this date, and it's not within those pay periods, you're going to get an error message, so it's going to say, "Nope, you can't do that. You have to be within that pay period." So, that's also a nice thing about an interactive form, is you can have these checks and balances to help you make the form correct. Okay, so, also, the list of employees, which I'm going to show you here, is dependent on this code as well. So, if it's something that's for an active employee, you're only going to see a list of active employees. If it's something that's for an employee that was here before, like the rehire, so if I go down to my rehire code, this changes to now I'm only going to see inactive employees, so it's to rehire someone that was here in the past. So, this does not cover the new hires. NeoGov is still doing the new hire stuff, so this is only for changes or rehires. Okay. So, we're going to demo a demotion, so no one take this personally. This is pretend. Again, demo a demotion, and I can enter the employee in two different ways. You have access to New World, so you have access to the employee number. So, if you know that employee number, the easiest thing to do is to enter the employee number here, and it will populate the information. If you don't know the employee number, you use this dropdown to give you the list of all the active employees in this case. There isn't a way to type ahead to say, "I want everything that starts in the D's," because it's pulling information from the New World system. It's an external lookup, so you can't do an autofill. So, you have to scroll down and find the area that you want. So, this person is in the Cs that I'm going to look up. So, get close to the Cs, and then I can use my mouse roller button to...
Mr. Chairman, Mike? Were we supposed to bring the people that are, will be filling out these forms?
No, this is just like a quick look, just so you guys can see what's going to happen.
Okay.
Training will happen later.
I don't think you need to go into a lot of detail.
Because this is a legacy.
It's just a matter of getting appreciation.
Okay.
Is that what you're thinking, Bob?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, so when you stepped out, I had to see that this is just to notify the electeds that this change is coming. And then we'll talk that the department heads up at this meeting.
Right.
And then some videos will be coming out for training and the Zoom video, Zoom training as well.
So, I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate that we're going to have some advancement in the change of personnel form. But I think at our level, that's probably all we need to know about. As far as how it's filled out and what have you, I think it's more of a...
Okay.
Training event.
Yeah, just trying to sum it up, if you could.
Okay, so, just so you can see when it's pulling the information, when I picked an employee, it populated the data like she's saying. So, it's populating the data. You then enter the information here you wanted. Then, at the bottom, you have your, your building and grounds and IT information that you would enter. enter, and you'd have your department head name and email address. So basically what's going to happen, so we can shorten the demo, is once you submit, the person submits this, whoever you put in here is your email address, they're going to get an email with a link on it. So the department head doesn't have to log into OnBase, they don't have to know a bunch of stuff, they just click on the link, this form then pops up on the screen, they can look at the information that's there, change it if they want to, click approve. Once they approve it, then it's going to go to the HR to be processed.
So, so you're absolutely right, Bob. This is a complete process, you know, it's a process, it's a paper process, but it's very important for us to bring it to you because it does affect nine hundred people a year, and your department to a large extent as well. So we just wanted to let all the electeds know ahead of time that this process that does affect a lot of employees is being rolled out. We've been working on it a long time, and we're really excited that it's coming forward for your department, um, because it'll make things a lot easier by doing that auto-population. So a lot of the stuff they're having to search for now is just going to be provided the minute they put a name in, so.
And it's exciting for IT as well because right now, we don't always get the information when employee leaves or they're changing jobs, and this is going to automate that to where you fill this information in, and when you hit submit, it's going to go to IT right now, and IT's going to have that information and can start getting your employees set up. So that's really exciting for us, too.
So any, any questions from anybody?
Just a, a quick one. Um, when the information goes to IT, will it also update the, uh, telephone information? When you, you go to the department, you look up who's there, and it gives their, uh, their job title?
Yes, that's a manual...
It's month before that gets updated.
Right, that's a manual process that IT does, um, but they need the information so that they can do that. So it will help make it go faster because we'll get the information faster.
Yeah, currently, currently, it's, it's very much like, um, we've been to some training in the past that were piped, you know? And so currently, the department is supposed to contact IT and say, I need this changed, I need this updated. You know, we send out notifications for orientation and that type of thing, but this, this notifies everybody instantly of all of the same information. So we're super excited about it. Even though it's process, it's still an improvement for the county.
Okay, let's wrap it up, guys.
Perfect.
Thank you, appreciate it. Let's move on. American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, next steps discussion, Leslie.
Yesterday, the commissioners decided to have a one-hour meeting, probably mid-June, to talk about the, uh, task force recommendations, and then we will, uh, go through those and make a decision on, um, which projects will be approved. And that's it, just wanted to let you know, so everybody will be notified of our next ARPA meeting, and that's really about it.
Questions? Barry?
Will we get a copy of the recommendations before that meeting?
So they're online right now?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you can look at, um, look at all of them.
All right, missed that, sorry.
Which is the task force recommendations.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Public comment? Anyone, public comment? Hearing none, I've got ten fifteen, meeting adjourned, thank you.